All right, we are on the record. It is six oh five P M. Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand and twenty four. We're convening, uh, calling to order this third meeting of the Andover Charter Revision Commission. We have in attendance, uh, Karen Madore, myself, Jody Gross, Carol Lee and Patricia Billings, Jeff McGuire. Absent at this point of the committee members is Adrian Mandeville. And we have members of the public, um, Eric Anderson, the cremes, ah, here, Adrian has joined us. Thank you. Uh, members of the public, the cremes, Eric Anderson, um, who's hidden again? Shannon Lawden, of course. And, um, now I'm forgetting who it is at behind seven nine eight three eight one five. Please remind me.
Leanne Hutchinson.
Leanne, thank you. All right. Call to order, take in attendance, um.
Sorry.
Yeah, Leanne, if you can mute, thank you. Uh, and Catherine Legaldi Lewis just joined. Thank you for coming. Uh, so the first, well, the second agenda item after calling the meeting to order is public speak. So, and no particular order, uh, Shannon.
Nothing at this time for now. Thank you.
Okay, uh, the cremes.
I'm here for public listen. I don't know about my wife.
Just here to listen. Wanted to know what's going on. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Catherine?
Nothing, thank you.
Eric?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. So that brings us to the main agenda item, which is.
Leanne.
What's that?
Leanne Hutchinson.
Uh, uh, sorry. Leanne, do you have anything to say? Okay.
I'm, I'm all set right now. Thanks.
All right. The main agenda item, which, uh, at this point, we're going to go through the list of action items that we delineated last week and get either a presentation or an update or whatever you have, basically. Uh, let's just see where everyone is and, uh, discuss things as appropriate and see where we go next. Um, since my item was the first on that list, what I'm going to do here is I'm going to share the screen like I did last week. I don't see. What are you folks seeing right now?
Nothing, just a plain old regular view.
Okay. Here we go. How about now?
Oh, you're good. You have multiple documents up though.
Yeah, well, so. There we go. So we had, well, I had multiple documents because it actually made sense because, this had the list of items. So the first item on the list here, the dollar amounts to trigger town meetings. I actually conferred quite extensively with Eric on this, which is why I invited him to the meeting so that the guy that knows what's behind these items can comment on questions. So basically in section three oh three, the annual town budget meetings and special town meetings. We have a number of conditions here, a number of monetary conditions that trigger a special town meeting. And, uh, it was generally agreed upon that a lot of these things were too small or that the ideas that were involved were too limiting or out of date. So the changes in here are to try to reflect, uh, the numbers that, uh, are more fitting for, uh, for what we see in the budget. So just going down through the, the few changes that we have here, um, the issuance of bonds and all other forms of financing, the terms of which are in excess of one year, did not have any floor on it. So if we needed to issue a bond for a dollar, we needed to go to town meeting. So we introduced the concept of putting a limit in here, fifty thousand dollars or more. And I'm going to go through all of these and then we'll go back and, and talk them so that, just so that we can see all this in context. Um, related to that supplemental appropriation, we went from a half of a percent to one percent. And then in E.
What's the number, what's the number on the one percent? What's the dollar number? Eric, if you could.
So that depends on the budget in any one time. But eight oh five B basically states that it is the combination of the towns portion of the budget and the school's budget minus RAM. So if you said one percent currently, it would be one percent of around nine million dollars would be the cutoff. And half percent is half of that.
Okay, any other questions on that point? I'll move on. Uh, section E leases and or lease options again, didn't have any floor on it. So we added in excess of fifty thousand dollars. And G, which I think is one that, that really makes the most sense because of the number of items that it covers, uh, the application for or participation in any federal state or private grant program. Now, what this had before was a limit on the value of the program. And what we're changing this to is that we're looking at how much the town has to kick in. If, if we have a grant that we're applying for that doesn't require any co-contribution by the town, free money, it makes sense, it, it doesn't make sense to have to go to a town meeting to get approval of it. We should just be able to move forward. In any case, if I understand this, uh, correctly, any of these, um, grants still have to go through the Board of Selectment before we can, uh, uh, submit an application. Is that correct, Eric?
That is correct. So I am, as the administrator, I am authorized by the Board of Selectmen to submit for any grant that does not require a town contribution. Anything that requires a town contribution requires the Board of Selectmen's approval anyway.
Okay. And again, we, we put a, a floor on this in excess of twenty five thousand dollars. So any grant where our portion of it is less than twenty five thousand dollars, again, we wouldn't have to go to town meeting. And that's it. It's those one, two, three, four changes. Thoughts? Opinions, contributions?
So if I can make a couple comments, Chair, is that acceptable to you?
Absolutely. That's why you're here, Eric.
Okay, so, um, the, the first is under three oh four, uh, B supplemental appropriations. The reason why I'm suggesting we raise that to one percent from a half percent is really based on guidance from our treasurer. Because our treasurer does not like what we do at the end of each fiscal year. And at the end of each fiscal year, we take the individual line items that are, uh, over expended. And we transfer money in from other line items that are under expend. And the treasurer feels that that kind of violates state law. And that what we should be doing is approving a supplemental appropriation for those particular line items. You know, so that they're under the cap. And then let everything else flow into unexpended fund balance, which essentially accomplishes the same thing. But that's what she thinks is the more legally correct way to do it in the state. But the problem is, is that because we run our budgets fairly tight, it's not uncommon to have a hundred or a hundred and fifty individual line items at the end of the year that are over, even though the overall budget is going to be, you know, a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars under. And so often the total supplemental appropriations would exceed a half of one percent. Um, but they're not likely to exceed one percent. Um, and if they do, then that would have to go to town meeting if we did that. Now, the treasurer still has to convince the Board of Finance that that is the way they should operate. Um, and that's on her to do that, but that would enable that. Um, the second thing is when we talk about town grants, I took a quick look um, through our grant folder and you know, over the last, say, four years, you know, we've applied for somewhere around thirty five grants. Um, and of those grants, um, roughly seventy percent of them would fall under the twenty five thousand dollar town contribution threshold. Um, if you made that fifty thousand dollars, only the top ten percent, which is essentially, you know, roughly one grant per year would rise to the threshold of requiring a town meeting. So from a governance standpoint, setting that at fifty thousand would be convenient. Remember, it still requires Board of Selectmen approval. Um, uh, if you set it to twenty five thousand, you're looking somewhere around three on the average year, somewhere three to four grants that potentially require a town meeting. Uh, but at least all the little stuff would not. So that's all I had to say on those items. I'm happy to take any questions you have or members have.
Um, a couple of quick questions. I, I guess my own take on this is that it, I would, I would really, I guess I would rather see us around fifty thousand on the grant stuff. Um, personally, seeing the, you know, how much we've been doing in grants and we've been fairly successful at it, you know? Um, and the, the second thing I would say is that, um, I personally would like to see a, a, a kick that we, when we start talking about leases that, leases or purchases that are above a hundred thousand dollars that instead of just going to a town meeting, it has to go to a referendum. I, you know, I'll be honest, I, I'm extremely frustrated about like our tractor purchase. That should have, that should have went to, that should have went to the whole town. The idea that we approved that at a meeting, I just, I'm extremely frustrated with that.
That was a town meeting that anyone could have gone to, right?
Well, yeah, anybody could go to any of them, but you know, basically you talk about a very small contingent making a decision. And, and then that was in a, you know, that's a two hundred and forty thousand dollar decision. You know, we're, we're pushing a quarter of a million dollar investment.
Right, to a meeting that any town resident could have attended. And they chose not to.
But Jody, it's not that people choose not to a lot of times. Candidly, it's that they just can't go. You have parents with kids, you know, that they can't, they can't just run out at, at seven P M. When they're trying to put their kids to bed, you, you know, I think that's just common sense.
Most of those meetings are attended by the people who really don't want to spend money.
Really? Because that didn't seem like that was the vote last time. In fact, the, the problem we run into a lot of times is you have people that pack meetings that, that, you know, want to spend money. So.
Uh, that's funny. I like that one. I want to spend money. Eric, we've, we've wanted to spend money.
Well, obviously we did. I mean, I'm not going to get into the active discussion and rehash it here, but it's a perfect example why these things should go to a town. The bigger numbers should go to a town vote.
And Eric would, I'm sorry, uh, or someone here, was it nine million dollars? That's our top line? But, uh, budget for the town?
Between the two.
So. That and, uh, and the, um, and the regular town is nine million. Okay.
Correct. The way section eight oh five reads is that it's the total budget minus the contribution to RAM, to the regional budget is the number you use for that half percent or one percent or in some places, point two five percent, uh, appropriation.
Well, then you're pushing up against Eric's or Adrian's number of a hundred thousand dollars to go to referendum.
But when you sit and think about that, if you talk about a hundred thousand dollar expense, you know, um, you talk about the tractor as a perfect example, you know, the tractor is a, you know, is nearly two thirds of a mill. You know, this isn't a small expense for the average taxpayer that we're spending.
Well, we could get into all the details related to it's, it's not appropriate or it's appropriate and where it should go. But when you're saying you want to go to referendum, you're just adding more costs and more issues onto the town.
Okay, I would ask, I, I would go back to Bob and Bob, your numbers, I don't have a problem with your numbers than.
Yeah.
One percent.
I, I'm also going to step in here and say, Adrian, we're not going to relitigate the decision that was made already. And just for the sake of, of, of argument, that meeting was one of the best attended ones that I've seen in a long time. So yes, there's a minority of, of the town that participates, but for that particular meeting, people were better represented than, than I think most items.
And it was a very close vote. And that's my point. Imagine if you actually had more of the town people being able to participate in that meeting. It was a very short notice for a meeting. You know, and it was a, and that's the other issue. I mean, even if you, even if, again, as a parent or as a, as an adult with a, a, a busy schedule, you know, trying to take time off at the last minute to, to go to a meeting that literally is, is you know, maybe five or six days away. By the time I get the postcard is kind of tough sometimes. So.
For, for context, how many, uh, typical referendum in town? How many particip, what's the percentage of participation there?
A typical one, I don't know, would probably be, I think our average is probably fifty people.
For a referendum?
Random? Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I saw you talking about budget, a budget meeting.
Yeah. Sorry.
Uh, somewhere between a hundred and forty and three hundred, I think, probably in average.
That's correct. It depends on what the mill rate is going to be. So if our mill rate is going up substantially a couple of mills, then we do get a larger turnout.
Okay. Yeah, I liked, uh, Bob, your, your numbers. I thought they were fine as presented.
Well, they're really Eric's numbers. He's, he's the guy that's in the thick of this.
Right.
Yeah, and I discussed these and fleshed them out and kicked it around until something made sense. All right, if there's no other discussion on this, then it's going to be, you know, this is, these changes will eventually be in the package of what we submit to the, the Board of Selectmen. Um, and that's, that, all that I have to say on.
All right, are you, so you're making this as a motion? Because if you're, if you are, then I would make a motion to adjust the, the, uh, you know, to add a, to add a line that over a hundred thousand dollars, we go to, we go to a referendum.
And where is that in this section, Adrian? Tell us where this.
It's not, that's the point. That's the problem. It's not in the section. We don't have a trigger for this. You know?
Well, Adrian, let me play with your thing because a hundred thousand dollars, you know, five years from now, a hundred, you know, we have a nine million dollar. And, you know, one percent is what? Ninety thousand dollar. Should there be something in our town charter that says something over two percent or something over three percent should go to referendum? Is that, is that where you're headed?
Yeah, I think that's, I, that's perfectly acceptable, you know, and honestly, I'd even find middle ground and say we do one point five percent, you know?
Well, I'm going to suggest that it would be inappropriate to try to come up with wording or numbers here on the fly on a completely new item.
Well, Bob, Bob, I don't think that even your writing or your changes are the end all be all. I think what you're doing is you're trying to come up with things to sit there and address and get into the draft report. So you know, you can put forth a motion, we can put forth a motion on your potential changes to the trap, the, the, the charter. And then the draft has to be presented to us down the road. We all have to approve that draft from the attorney or from whoever is going to write it. I recommend the attorney. Um, Adrian, and if Adrian wants to make a motion to put something in the charter for a referendum vote at, I agree with Jody, two percent of the total budget. And if we did something else, we would vote on.
If we did one and a half, that would be, you know, one, uh, it'd be a hundred and thirty five thousand, which, which basically is a third of a mill, anything over a third of a mill. No.
Yeah, maybe we should keep them as two separate items though. I mean, if you're, you know, approve what Bob and Bob did, and then there's another item that I think we're, we're trying to add to the list, which is reasonable. I think Adrian's bringing up a, a good point. Um, it's just a question of what's the right number to say. Boy, this is a, this is substantial to go to referendum. I don't think any of the numbers you listed, Bob, hit that threshold.
Right. So Adrian is talking about a number that would require going to referendum. That's not what we're talking about here under special town meetings. That's a separate section. It's really a separate subject. And that's why it, what I was going to say, Jeff, when you stepped in was, Adrian, you feel strongly about this. I want, I want to suggest that we not deal with that particular item right now. I want Adrian to go away, figure out where it fits in, in the charter, write his draft, and then we, we discuss that at, at the next meeting. Okay?
No, that's fine. I guess my point is that this is about triggers for spending. That's really, that's really what we're addressing. It wasn't about necessarily, does it fit in this particular line? It's about triggers for town meetings, referendums, spending, spending within the charter and how, and how we address that.
Okay, I want to take a step back from this because there's something else that I, I was thinking along these lines. Here we are at the third meeting. We have a hard limit date in which to complete the changes and submit the first draft to the Board of Selectmen. We already have a significant list of items that we agreed to tackle. The first meeting deliberately included a public hearing. And the public was free to contribute their thoughts, suggestions, recommendations. This process cannot be open ended. Okay? We can't continue to accept further submissions for additional changes just as they, you know, we have to draw a line somewhere.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, but when this was originally discussed and, and this was something that Eric, you know, talked about, you know, this is something that was brought up as triggers for referendums and voting. You know, so I did not, I do not feel that this is something separate. If you're talking about, you want it separate now because you want to go to it, because you're saying, well, it's a different section of the charter, then that's fine. But the point is it all fell under the same, it fall under the same umbrella. This wasn't a, this, this wasn't something me trying to be open ended. This is trying to me address something that I thought we were already on the path to address.
It really does fall under the same umbrella. Because if we are increasing the amounts for the issuance of bonds, increasing supplemental appropriations to one percent of the budget, putting a threshold in to, uh, push something to referendum is just, I think that that would be appropriate too, because that way it gives the voters, taxpayers in town certain amount of time to obtain an absentee ballot and plus the hours of six A M. To eight P M. Voted a referendum.
All right. Jeff, you are more familiar with the order of these things than I. I, uh, I defer to your suggestion or recommendation as to how to proceed at this point.
Um, I would recommend making a motion that outlines the changes you want to make and then someone will second it, will have further discussion, and then we'll vote. So if you just review the changes that you were, you had discussed. And then I would sit there and I would go back. You already asked Adrian to come up with this, the area that he believes that the referendum issue with a hundred thou, uh, two percent or one and a half percent, whatever that number is. Um, we address that next week. So I mean, because I don't think anything you have here.
Just as a point of order, does that, that charge to, to Adrian also require a motion and, and, and a vote, or can that just be?
No, no, just put it as an agenda item on next week that, you know, that I'll put forward something and we vote on it and that's that.
All right. So.
Simple enough.
Who wants to make a motion then?
I'll put forward a motion to, um, add the four recommended changes outlined by Bob, uh, with, um, input from Eric.
Can you list them?
Sure. Uh, adding, uh, issuance of bonds and all other forms of financing exceeding fifty thousand dollar in value. Um, changing any supplemental appropriation, uh, which exceeds one percent was prior, previously point five percent. Uh, and changing any lease, lease options, adding a caveat in excess of fifty thousand dollars uh, to which the town, uh, including the board is a party too. Uh, and then, uh, the application for or participation in any federal state or private grant program uh, striking the in excess of twenty five hundred dollars. Um, and, um, um, this shall require and or local town, a board of education to contribute in excess of twenty five thousand dollars in kind in, in section G.
I'll second his motion.
Any additional discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a, a mending motion. I would change the twenty, in excess of twenty five thousand dollars in participation. Enter to such grant programs to fifty thousand dollars and, and I'll quickly explain why I feel that. There are multiple situations where we may have leftover money in a budget or we may have, um, money in a contingency that, that we can use. We have an opportunity to get into a program fifty thousand dollars, I think, and, and, and you'll notice that I'm, I try to be open on these things, although I'm a fiscal conservative and I want us to, you know, be more aware of how we spend our dollars and let everybody participate. In this particular case, I'll say that fifty thousand dollars, I think, falls within the purview, you know, of a, of a, a board of selectmen and a board of finance. And, and especially now because we're getting so much better now at getting grants. And we're using them much more often. As everyone has noticed, there's a bunch of things going on in town. I think fifty thousand dollars gives us a little more room and, and allows us to participate more. So that would be my motion, fifty thousand dollars amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, any additional discussion? All in favor? I, I, I opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. All right. So we'll move on to the next items, early voting and dates of elections that Karen and Patty took on. Um, I'm going to stop sharing my screen here. And Karen, do you need to share?
Um, uh, no, but I can always, uh, send this, uh, to you guys afterwards. I just wrote everything up. Um, as far as.
Can I interrupt real quick? Um, Bob, I, uh, Karen's obviously going to send this to you. I sent something to everyone on the committee, um, regarding the report from, uh, from that Hebron actually did. I think it would be beneficial if we can take all the things that are being presented at the meeting, um, and put them in a packet to then get attached to this particular meeting so that the public has the same thing we have. That's all.
Mister Secretary?
If that's a choice, I'm going to say no. Well, the public can attend the meeting, the public can view YouTube, um, and I'm a volunteer.
Well, as a, as a matter of policy, I mean, simply, we just have to, whatever, eh, what I've sent you, what Karen's going to send you, you simply would need to forward those over, I believe. I, I, Carol, am I correct that it's done now by Kate? She'll actually put the packet up for you, um, with the meeting.
Yes.
It just has to get sent to her. So literally all you'd have to do is put it in a single email. Jody, do you think that you could do that?
Um, I would request that the committee send it directly there. Um, just like Bob sent it out to all of us. And if it, if we could add Kate to that distribution, that would be better.
That's perfectly fine. I'll, I'll gladly resend mine to Kate. But I, I do think it's important that this stuff is out there for the public. That's all. And actually, I believe it's actually, we believe it's actually required. So we need to make available to the public, anything that we have at a meeting, period. If we have a pack.
It's not, and we are, it's on YouTube.
No, that doesn't cut. No, that doesn't cut it, Jody, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, I'd have to say also, any, outside of a formal meeting, any communication that car, that, that exceeds four of us. Constitutes a quorum at that point, so it has to be shared.
All right, so I'm just gonna need an email address to share it.
Um, Karen, did you get the, did you get the email from me?
Uh, I believe I did.
Okay, so if you're gonna share it with all of us, you would simply do that, and then Carol, can you just send her a quick email with Kate's?
I sign one.
Thank you.
And Bob's then too, right?
What's that?
Those modifications you made.
Yeah, anything that's presented tonight. We all need to just add Kate to it, and then in the future, make sure she's on the distribution list, as you noted, Jody.
Yep.
Okay, Karen.
Okay, um, as far as the early voting, um, after research with, and discussion with the registrar voter. Uh, we feel that it would be best to address early voting by adding the following section, so adding section two ten for early voting. Uh, the dates and hours for early voting shall be conducted as prescribed by the Connecticut General Statues. Uh, the reason that we feel it should be left open and identified only as prescribed by state statutes. So it eliminates the need for the revision if the number of days or hours. That early voting polls are to be open were changed, or if the early voting was changed to include referendums. Exactly. That's, that's basically.
I'm sorry, Karen, were you sharing screen?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay.
I don't know how to do that, so.
Don't worry, that, that was. That was fine. I mean, I think we shouldn't go into significant detail related to early voting.
Right.
No, it was succinct and basically said, whatever the state does, we follow.
Perfect. Exactly.
I would, I would make a motion then that we accept Karen's submission as, um, you know, as our next line item to go to the, uh. To go towards the report.
I'll second that. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Karen. All right, um, the next item here. Did the early voting cover the dates of the elections also? They, they did not.
Yes, no, but that was your assignment, so.
Yeah. Um, as far as section two oh three, uh, we want to change to reflect the change from May to November municipal elections. Uh, which this would affect two oh three, A, B, C, and D, so as follows. Um, A, on and after January first, twenty twenty four, at the biannual. Municipal election to be held on Tuesday after the first Monday of November of the odd number years. Pursuant to section ten, twelve of this charter, and then the rest remain the same. Uh, B, at, at the biannual election to be held on Tuesday after the first Monday of November twenty twenty three, and every four. Four years or after, and that's only if the clerk remains elected. Uh, C, at the biannual town election to be held on Tuesday after the first Monday of November twenty twenty three. There shall be elected members, uh, the rest remain the same. Um, items C one through six will remain the same. Um, and D, all terms of office except as otherwise provided in this charter. Shall commence on the second Tuesday following the November election, and then the rest remain the same. So, you know, like I said, I'll submit this.
I apologize, Bob, um, was, uh, was that, or do we have a separate line in that list for adjusting the? Adjusting to align with RAM?
That was separate. I had that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay.
Did it, I, I'm sorry, did someone, um, make a motion to? Accept Karen's proposal?
I'll make a motion. All right, I'll second Carol.
Any further discussion on this? Seems comprehensive.
Moving to November is appropriate.
Yeah, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries unanimously. Okay. The next item there then is referendum voting, align the board of ed and the budget timing with Hebron. And that's Carol.
So after doing some research, the only way to. Align so that we're able to comply with the state's statute, which is RAM referendum. Is the two day following first Monday in May, we would have to move budget process. Uh, right now, the way that Hebron rewrote their charter in order to do is that the board of finance. Not later than the third Tuesday in April, holds a public hearing on the budget. Right af, immediately after that, well, board of finance within a week, they. Submit their, they present their budget as they found after what they heard at the public hearing. And then it just goes automatically to referendum, so eliminate our annual town budget. There would be no way that we would be able to have an annual town budget meeting because. Unless we were just to have the town, the town budget meeting, receive input like. The board of finance does, and then automatically go to referendum. Not take any votes as to whether or not to send it like we currently. Still have an annual town budget meeting, but we would have to bump or the finance up to their public hearing. Beginning of April, have our annual town budget meeting, middle of April. And then if people make motions there at the annual town budget meeting to eliminate something in the budget. It would just automatically then go to referendum. On that. But that is the only way that we'll be. And why? And budget.
I don't disagree with the timing, but the question that I've always had on these meetings is, uh, we, we're still in. We're still considering, we have to have the budget meeting and the budget hearing. Can those two be combined? Can we work a way out to combine those two?
So what are you saying, like, combine the annual town budget meeting with the board of finance public hearing?
Yeah.
And then just. And do that. I was just saying, if we still wanted to keep them separate, or just totally eliminate.
Well, why couldn't that budget meeting, uh, town meeting, hearing? Be a full-fledged, which it is, it's a board of finance meeting, and why couldn't they? Make adjustments on the fly and get it approved? I mean, because that's what's going to referendum, right?
They could, that's how Hebron does it. They hold a public hearing, uh, the board of finance receives the input. They then, if they feel the public input is appropriate, they agree with it, whatever. They make their adjustments and then submit that budget referendum.
Jeff, what you were suggesting is actually like item nine of the things that we were covering. Merging the board of finance public hearing and the town meeting. Aren't those one and the same, what you were just saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would like to see that. I mean, the only, the only concern I have, Carol, is people making changes. And then what occurs with those changes, and how do they get rolled into the budget? You know, what is the mechanism for us to do it effectively and efficiently, so that it just gets processed?
Right, well, that's why it's with the board, I mean, in Hebron, you just have the board of finance, the public hearing. And then that budget gets referendum. So they take input from the public, but the public can't make any motions. Or reduce it.
So they can't. So in Hebron, they can't. Say that again, just explain it in a very basic way, what happens in Hebron process?
Okay, so the board of finance holds their public hearing. Uh, not later than third Tuesday in April. They receive public input, and within one week after that public hearing. The board of finance shall dissent a budget or vote by the annual budget referendum. And that was really.
So just, just to stop there for one second. So in our process, uh, at the town budget meeting. Individuals from the public can make a motion to decrease our budget. All right, before it goes to referendum. So in Hebron, they're eliminating that?
Correct.
Okay. But at the hearing. The board of finance can take public input, and if necessary, make adjustments immediately right then and there.
Correct, but it's just.
Before it gets.
Right, so seven elected officials will make the decision whether or not to reduce something that, you know. Any members of public seem to be wrong on, or they could just send their initial proposed budget directly to.
Okay. I mean, I like that, I just don't know if. I like that. I think that's a cleaner way to process it and move it on, and I like the timing because. You know, the way we've done it for years is that there's a town meeting. A re, a budget referendum for RAM, and then a budget referendum for the town. So we have multiple events all. Coming within a three-week, four-week time span. I, 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 I like that, I, I, I don't know what everybody else thinks about it, but. I think that would be more efficient way of doing business, and Eric, if you're still on, does that timeline? Sound unreasonable to you? It, you know, I just, I guess I'd ask you that because you deal with board of finance.
So based on that, I started working backwards and saying, okay, how could you make that work? So if you set the town-wide budget referendum, it's the same day of RAM referendum. Um, Carol, I believe that's usually, what, around May sixth, somewhere there, you.
You're saying for, for what, for RAM?
For RAM, yeah.
It's the Tuesday following the first Monday in May, so it varies. Um, this year it was the seventh, right? Yes.
Okay.
Where it's been like the third of it.
So it's gonna be somewhere between, essentially, the earliest it could be was the May second. And then the latest it could be theoretically would be May seventh or eighth, actually.
Seven, seven.
Okay, so you would have to back that up, the town-wide budget meeting. To somewhere between April fifteenth and April twentieth. Um, and then you could keep the language that says the referendum is then on the second following Tuesday. Align with the regional board of education.
But we would have to eliminate the wording that says if. The budget is defeated at the annual town budget meeting. And we would go back to another annual town budget meeting the same day of the following week. So. I believe that was why it just goes straight from board of finance to public hearing. To the referendum.
So you would, you would basically, if we kept as much of our current system as we could. You would be rolling the dice and saying, okay, assuming that the. Budget at the first budget meeting gets approved to referendum, it would coincide with the RAM referendum. If it does not get accepted, if the budget gets rejected, then it would not coincide with it.
Okay, the only other option would be is that the annual town budget meeting. Except motions from the floor, someone votes to eliminate a budget line. Gets a second, and that passes, great, but not take a vote at the end. As to whether or not to send the adjusted budget or the proposed budget from board of finance. Referendum. All we would do is take motions from the, this would still give the taxpayers the vote. Eliminate a budget line if they would like, but it automatically would go to referendum. But that would mean we would have to bump the board's finance up the beginning of April for their public hearing. And then we would have to follow the board of finance and maybe that following, so if they have the first Wednesday in April. We would have the second Wednesday, and then it would automatic, you know, that town meeting. Let the adjustments be made by people, then automatically go to referendum, not allow a vote. Pass.
I, I very much like that idea, because I think, in order to get support for this, we still need to leave in place the ability for them to make a reduction.
I agree. So, you know, as long as that's not putting too much pressure on the board of finance. Right now, as it is, Eric, you're asking us for our budgets every department in December, that we have it to you by the beginning of January. So, you know, that's giving time to. Have the board of select and just review it, and then forward on to the board of finance. For them to have their workshop.
Right, in, in, in my world, the ultimate thing would, it would move up by approximately two weeks. When I would have to give the board of finance their budget. Um, but that's well after I've developed my budget, so what that does is that shortens any potential review time by the board of selectmen. Under our current system. The board of selectmen still has to make by charter certain decisions, like what is the pay and compensation for town employees. Um, and they have to weigh in on the big picture items that the town wants to accomplish. Um, but that should be doable. I, I see no reason why it couldn't happen.
I, I think the other advantage of this too is that it will put, there is so much pressure put on. I, I, I don't know if the other board of selectmen members felt it, I certainly felt, I think I did, and I, I certainly on the board of finance, I, there was a lot of. Hemming and hawing, um, about can this, can this budget get through a town meeting to the full, to the whole town? So I think it's gonna allow them to focus, um, a little more on the bigger picture stuff and getting it through. And, and not get dug down in the nuances of, is this gonna get to a, a full town vote? Because I think a lot of times we, we put a budget together and we thought, this is the right budget for the town, this is the right number that we need. But we don't know if we can get through step one to get everybody to have a fair vote on it, so I think it actually will, will be good for them in a way. And I think the process can work very well.
All right, so walk through the process again, Carol, just so it's clear for me, because I'm sitting there thinking that. I just want the board of finance to have an open meeting in the end, to not, not finish. It does not close until a budget is ready for referendum, so that you can meet all your timelines. That, that's in my head.
So what would we be doing, just be basically moving the Board of Finance process up by about three weeks? Cause right now traditionally, they have their public hearing on the budget, the last Wednesday of April. And then annual town budget meeting, one of the first ten business days of May. And then rolling to a referendum. Second Tuesday following our annual town budget. We would just bumping them up by approximately three weeks.
And we would still do the same process, Carol, like kinda like we did with the Charter Commission here, we could do, we could do a. You do a public meeting and then close the meeting and then the Board of Finance would simply have a short meeting where they, they've then motioned to move that to a referendum, correct?
No.
No.
No, so what we would do, because you still wanna give the people the voice, annual town budget meeting. Eliminate budget lines, whatever they may do there. So you would have the Board of Finance, public hearing, let's say the first Wednesday of April. But then, and this is just putting these days out here. Second, the second Wednesday of April, the annual town budget. Allow taxpayers their input, eliminate a budget item. Uh, reduce a budget item, whatever they do. If they get a second and those votes. And obviously that's the budget that would go to referendum. But it would be automatic to go to referendum.
Okay.
It would not, we would not be taking a vote of people. Send it to referendum, we could automatically go. They follow the person.
I, I guess my, my only question was the logistics of, do you have to have a vote? Whether it's by the Board of Finance or by the public to move it to referendum, if you're saying we don't need one, then that's great, I'm just.
Well, I mean, if we do, that's something that we have to get, um, from. Dennis, if we would have to do that. But I'm thinking if we put that language in the Charter, like Hebron did. Where they, uh, present a budget. So if we were to put that, we, the Board of Finance has their public hearing, then. The town budget meeting. Presents the budget or vote by the annual budget referendum. So. That language would be in the Charter. It's already dictating what the process. So I am not sure what Dennis will say, but it. Looks like Hebron does it just.
Okay. But Hebron goes right to referendum.
It goes straight, so it's the Board of Finance public hearing. They present the budget for vote by the annual budget referendum. So if we were gonna go and have. The Board of Finance public hearing the first Wednesday of April. And then the annual town budget meeting, second Wednesday of April. And then, you know, after whatever adjustments are made by meeting. Then that budget is presented for vote by the annual budget referendum. wording would be in the automatically sent.
So we're gonna give a town meeting the ability to. Now, so right now, a town meeting, there, there are motions made to reduce line items and to reduce budget lines.
Correct.
We vote them up or down. And then we move to vote on the entire budget.
Correct, so we, anyone can make motions from the floor, they get a second and it passes. Then that adjustment is made, the budget. Then. At the end, here's the ballot to send that. Budget with whatever adjustments made by the town. Rep to a referendum.
Okay. But Carol, at that process, you're saying it, it's up or down, adjustments can be made anyway.
Go up, the only adjustments can be to reduce or eliminate line item.
Got it.
For argument's sake, why couldn't you make a motion to increase the budget? If you're gonna send it directly to, right now, if the public at the meeting think the budget. Is too low for some reason. They have the ability to not send it to referendum and give the Board of Finance the mandate. To increase it, that's been done multiple times in the past. Um, when they cut the Board of Education more than residents liked. So what happened if you did give them the ability to increase and decrease?
Yeah, but they currently, but to be clear though, they don't currently have the option of decreasing the Board of Ed until after it fails, so.
Yeah, but like a resident state trooper, say the Board of Finance. Got rid of it and people in the town said, hey, wait a second, we really want this.
Well, as, as you pointed out earlier, Jody, people could go and they could vote down the budget at the, at the vote, you know?
Right, but wouldn't it be more efficient if they could? Add it at a town meeting or adjust it upward at a town meeting?
Oh, I don't know if it's in the Charter. I'm trying to find it, I don't know if it's a step from requirement that you can increase or it is something that. We can do by Charter. Uh, put that in where they are allowed. Adjustments increasing the budget. But right now, um, I know that the only adjustments are allowed.
I mean, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I would not, I personally would not support an increase. On any, I, I, or even the ability to increase. I think the problem with that becomes. There are, there is sometimes a lack of understanding from the general public about the implications of numbers. Um, you know, I, I mean, part of it's going on right now and the public is completely, I think unaware on a lot of levels. Um, we have right now. Um, our budget for RAM, our, our, what we're paying into RAM has been going down. And so our budgets look really good right now. But there's a population swing about to hit, it's gonna go the other way, and over the next five years, you're gonna need. Give or take a million dollars, so, you know, something in the neighborhood of three plus mils. To fix the budget as we go forward in the next five year cycle, so I think that. There are fiscal issues. That are much bigger than the general public could understand unless they really were attending every meeting. And that doesn't happen, that's why we have representative bodies, Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, therefore. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't agree with that, and I think the other thing, we already have protection for the Board of Education. So they get through and, and get a budget vote with their budget. And I think, in, in general, I would say, I, I'm actually in favor of that on the town side, but I. I just don't see the town accepting it without a way to take it down a notch. It's a very rare occasion where they come in and say they want more money.
Right, um, so it's eight oh three B. That says the town meetings show only have the power to reduce or modify, but not increase the budget or any portion thereof. Here's also, like Adrian said, protection for the Board of Ed, it said the town meeting may not alter any specific items. Contained in the budget proposed by the local Board of Education.
So, but you can, but you can, but you can go at the total for the Board of Education and that's happened in recent meetings.
Well, right, so it has happened where the Board of Finance, yes, you know, five percent and ten percent. Reduction in that.
Okay, but, but listen, my, my, my whole, my whole thought process here is simpler. Less, less, less issues, you know, um, we don't wanna make this more difficult and. I'll go to Adrian's point of the, the RAM and people not understanding, I, I don't, I don't believe that, I think people are smart enough to get it. And the issue i- with, that Adrian's addressing, I don't believe is fully fleshed out. Because I don't believe the numbers that our school is providing line up exactly with the way that the numbers line up with. Uh, Marlboro and Hebron, so it, it's, it's, uh, you know, the sky is falling.
Just, just for clarification, when you say numbers, you're talking about population?
Population, yeah.
Okay, we're not talking about, we're not talking about actual budget numbers, I.
No, 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 the budget, I, I understand the total budget, but the reason why we've currently had a decrease is because our population has fallen. And there's, there's, there's a fear and there's people saying that our numbers are going to increase. You know, significantly, and I've asked at the last meeting to get the numbers from the Board of Education to align with the other Board of Education. So to make sure that we're not. Uh, we're not counting our preschool kids, we're not counting some things, the other schools are not counting, so we understand where our population falls truly. And. I, I understand there's some concern and it's, it's, it's legitimate, I just don't think it's as much as we're saying, I think we gotta really get our. Number alignment, and, and that's a different issue, that's not for the Charter. So, let's just, let's just move on to, I try to be simple, Carol, everyone, sorry, Jody, one thing. Carol, why, why couldn't we just have one meeting? And consolidate the meeting, the hearing and the meeting. And, and I don't, I agree with Adrian, no up, because no one in this town wants more money, like. You know, they go to the referendum and vote and vote no, if they chose to, if, 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 if. The Board of Finance cut the state trooper and it got through, Jody, just as a case. The budget would be voted down at referendum probably, and, you know, then. It would. It would have to go back and we'd go on a cycle.
And what happens if it gets voted down and we, the, the RAM, the budget? You, so you have the second, I guess you have from the second week of April. Is when that annual town meeting is. Until the RAM budget at the same day, so you really, if it get voted down, you have to somehow very quickly do another. Modifications and vote, do we have enough time?
It's a week, like, you get another week and then you have other problems, so you have to have the budget posted for long enough, if I'm accurate, Carol. Sorry, I did that.
Right, so there would have to be another, the budget for the finance would have to have another meeting. Do the budget and then we would at that. Point, you, you just probably put something in like eight oh three, we currently have where. If it is defeated at referendum, then can still follow that same.
Well, defeat, defeating it referendum is just a whole other process, it's like, it's like, what's the first date of the referendum? With the hope that it passes on that date that RAM is being voted on. And then we move on, if it fails, it fails, and then we go through the steps to, to get another one done and another referendum vote and so on and so on, but. The first one, and I keep mentally coming to it, why do we allow the, even if they vote? We, even if we vote to move the budget forward, the town meeting, we move to, to, to not approve the budget for referendum. Why can't we have that meeting stay open? The Board of Finance goes and sits there and says, these are the adjustments we are gonna make. They come back to the town meeting, which is still in session, and you gotta stay there, this is the type of government we want, town meeting. Then you stay there until a budget is approved to go to referendum.
Or we could go and have a public hearing for the Board of Finance. That public hearing after they receive input from the public. Have that adjourned. Then go into the annual town budget meeting where the public, whoever is attending is allowed to vote. Budget only. This way it eliminates having a free rate section eight oh three. And then whatever votes are taken, they are going to pass. That is the budget that will then be presented to the annual budget referendum.
Okay, and I'm gonna give a hypothetical to everybody here. The people pack the town meeting, they get forty-five out of forty-seven people who show up to our town meetings. And they sit there and say, I want to make a motion to reduce the Board of Education spending by a hundred thousand dollars. And that motion passes. Right, because the Board of Education. Doesn't think this cycle is very bad, they don't get people to come to the town meeting, it passes, now we're sending that to referendum.
There is a clause in the, in the Charter here too, regarding reducing it. The, the law, we can't reduce Board of Education budget below the required per pupil spending.
Okay, but to be clear, Carol, I thought there was also, when the bifurcation happened. And, and, and I apologize, I didn't go and read that section, but I thought when the bifurcation happened. We put, there was something that went in there that protected the Board of Education, so they get at least one vote. Because of the bifurcation.
Oh, I'm sorry, could you repeat that again, what was that?
My understanding, I thought when the bifurcation of the budget happened, right? That, that because of that bifurcation, I thought we, there was some, some language in there. That protected the school budget until at least one vote happened. One referendum vote. Right. Yeah, that's correct. But what I'm saying, Adrian, is, is someone could go in, isn't that, that is correct? Eric shaking his head, so Eric, you know, go ahead.
I, I don't believe that's correct. Somebody could still go to a current town budget meeting. And make a motion to reduce the AES budget. Um, or any line item. And if a majority of people at that meeting approved it, then it would be the, what would go to referendum.
To referendum, yeah, a- and, and that's correct, and what Adrian is saying, at that, at that referendum, if it's voted down, the budget fails. The budget fails, it goes back to the Board of Finance, but the next vote is a bifurcated vote. Okay.
Can we, can we ask Shannon real quick, Shannon may have some feedback on this. I just wanna make sure we're understanding this correctly, cause it does matter.
I'll use eight oh three G, which is substitute budget. Did any budget fail to gain final approval prior, prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, the town was given a substitute. Budget, um. In the case of Board of Education budget in compliance with the minimum budget requirement of state. So. You know, if somebody comes in and wants to reduce the local Board of Education budget, so that it's below that. Can't do that.
We, we, we got, you don't even wanna go there because there's a lot of issues related to that.
The thing that we're discussing here is just to try to get, so that we're saving money, eliminating a referendum and a town.
Right.
You know, second referendum, so the question is, do we want to do this, do we want to move our budget process up? The. Probably the best way to do it with, if you wanna have the public hearing for the Board of Finance first and then have it adjourned to. Our annual town budget meeting on the first Wednesday or second Wednesday in April, just to give everybody. Time to get the budget prepared, then. You know, we can move forward and do that, just to have the one referendum, but the only way to do that would be. Just to not have a vote at the annual town budget meeting as to whether or not to send it to referendum. The wording in our Charter would have to be the same.
Uh, so I would.
The annual budget meeting.
So, so I would make a motion then that we make the adjustments to align our. Budget referendum with the Hebron and the RAM school budget referendum. Um, with the caveat that we still include. Um, we, we do. And a, a budget meeting and a, a hearing and then a budget meeting, back to back, is that correct, Carol, that's how I wanna do it?
I will have to check with Dennis to make sure that needly, I don't.
Okay, assuming that.
I can think of that word prohibited, but we would still have to check with Dennis to make.
So we'll let, we'll let Dennis make that adjustment, but assuming that we align with RAM and that we, um, would do. We would not have a vote, it would automatically go to referendum, but that we would still have the ability to reduce the budget as we currently do.
Correct, because we're still giving taxpayers their voice at the town meeting to make their votes.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna sit there and say, I, I would, I don't, I don't feel comfortable. I, I, I want to sit there and align, like, don't get me wrong, I want one referendum, one time, spend the money one time. But I think you have to sit there and make the town meeting. The requirement on it, you can't just, I, I don't believe. And, and, and it would probably pass anyway. I'm trying to think in my head, the vote scenarios, like how it would work at a town meeting. If someone made a motion to cut a department or cut a budget line item. And then they sat there and they said, that's immediately going to referendum. I don't feel comfortable with that. I think what we need to do is make that meeting. Stay open until the town meeting, the group approves a budget to go to referendum, even if there's a. A requirement that the Board of Finance has to go back in and modify numbers at that meeting. I mean, that, that's how I, I, I look at it, because I, I have a really. Uh, I'm mentally trying to figure out in, if, you know, going to those town meetings and watching people get up and make their motions to, to make cuts. Um. I mean, what if they packed the vote for, uh, the state trooper? I mean, we wanted to make reductions to state trooper, but you know, there was a blowback from older residents that.
So as, as you noted to Jody earlier, they would vote the budget down.
Correct, but we don't want to get into that, you know, that's a vicious cycle. Then the budget gets bifurcated and we have all the animosity related to all that stuff.
But those things happen. That's why you, you know, I mean, what Bolton went, I, I got just recently Bolton has gone multiple rounds. I think they went about five cycles recently, you know?
Yeah, but I'm really happy that we look like a sane town. With the exception of the people writing letters to the River East, we look really good.
Well, the good news is if you read the River East, you'd find out that they can't do, they can't do the national politics thing anymore.
That's okay, good. Uh, I'm happy about that. Um. It's just a question. It's a, no, because he knows he's, knows, knows.
The ten percent on both sides, as Jeff calls it.
Exactly.
So J- Jody, what is, you know what, Jody, Bob's, Bob's, Bob's like Switzerland on most things. Um, and, and Karen and Carol A and that little group is gonna, they're gonna be quiet on this a little bit unless we go too far off track, I think. So Jody, what do you think? You answered it.
Yeah, no, I like the idea of trying to gain some efficiency. Um, so, um, I, you know, it's a little bit hard to follow because I'm, I'm not deep into this process today. But it sounds like you want to do a Board of Finance, um, public hearing. And for like the first week of April and then the annual town meeting could either be a week later. Or I think what I'm hearing is could you do that back to back? Um, and, but the vote is. Um. Um, and at the ten annual town meeting, I'm fine with the process. That's, you know, people can do some level of reduction. Although Adrian, I, I've been thinking a lot about what you said and, you know, sometimes people don't have. The broad perspective on finances that others do. So I do worry what Jeff is saying where they might reduce something that's. An essential service or, um, or, or people have broader ideas on. But I think the, the end game what here was to align the RAM and our town budget May sixth. So I'm not sure what you gain. Is this, and what do you gain by putting the back-to-back annual town meeting and Board of Finance?
I, 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 and CNN, generally speaking, I would agree with you. I think it's better to give them at least a week apart so that you could have. You, you could have a Board of Finance that could take the public's input, make any last minute adjustments. And also I think there, there should always be a case, and I don't know that we've been doing it most recently. But there should always be a case where we actually present what our budget is, but why, but not just what it is, but why it is what it is. I think we need to do a much better job of communicating that, not just at the meetings, but, but sending out maybe a more detailed. Instead of a postcard, we send out a, a, a one-page file, you know, a one-page document that says, hey, that this is how we came up with this budget, you know? Especially if we're going to go into this process, but that's a different conversation.
Are there, are there maximums on what the town?
That would make. To, to give people a week, give the Board of Finance to make whatever adjustments they receive at the public hearing. And then a week later, if we were to have our annual town budget meeting. They'll allow the people to have their voice in our budget process. And make reductions or ask questions, but then automatically go to the annual budget referendum.
All right, so I. Why, why is, why is that important? I guess today, what it requires a motion?
To go directly to the referendum.
Yeah.
Because if we don't do that, then. We're not going to be able to line, align with the RAM budget referendum, which was the sole purpose of reviewing.
Are you asking about why, uh, why there's a motion needed or why it has to go direct?
Why there's a motion, like in today's world, there's a, I guess, a, uh, today it sounds like there's a motion to send it to, to, to town.
We are not going to make a motion at the annual town budget meeting. We're going to have wording in our charter. That at, you know, the annual town budget meeting. Will present the final budget with any adjustments that are made at that annual town budget meeting. Who vote by the annual budget referendum.
All right, can I ask for this? And I'll, I'll pull my motion from the floor. Would it make more sense at this point to ask, Carol, can you just put it in a formal document so we can all read it and understand what it actually looks like with? The spacing a week from this, a week to that? Can we do that?
I will do that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to throw out the different options that we have and what we would have to do.
I, I thought it was just my stroke brain, that was.
I thought it was just my stroke brain struggling to grasp, but it sounds like maybe not.
It's not, let me, let me say something here. You guys are all much better versed in the, the details and the nuances and what happens when. And this is obviously a complex subject with some subtlety. Carol, you brought some great ideas to the floor, but it's clear also that a little bit of modification is necessary. There's still a little bit of contention going on here. So yeah, Adrian said what I was struggling to find a, a time to jump in and say. You need to put it in black and white so that we can all look at it, because, yeah, I don't have a. I'm not struggling with a stroke brain, but I'm still struggling to follow along exactly what happens when and under what circumstances.
So can I just ask this question before I speak with our town attorney? Um, and I know, Jody, you were saying about have the public hearing for the Board of Finance, let's say the first Wednesday in April. Then the next Wednesday, the annual town budget meeting, and then that goes. Automatically to the annual budget referendum on the Tuesday following the first. Is that what? The rest of.
That's what I think you put on the table and it sounded appropriate to me. I didn't, I kind of liked the idea of having the. Space between the public hearing and the, I mean, I just didn't know if that causes more money or causes, we're trying to avoid that. Um, but it does give people time to, um. Right, you know, kind of, you know, Board of Finance to take in the public's input.
I just wanted to present.
A little bit in town and, and then make, and I understand why you have to go automatically out of that town meeting to referendum. Because you have to make that sixth deadline or that, 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 where they could get connected.
But I just wanted to present, you know, everything, have everything on the table, you know, and either votes great.
Okay, can, can, can we just wrap this up and say that we're going to continue this item to next week's meeting? Carol, you'll come back with something that's a little more formalized. You'll share your screen. We'll review it again and hopefully not. Talk about it for forty-five minutes before we come to a consensus.
Yes.
Okay. Great. So let's go on to item five, town clerk position. Adrian.
Yep, um, I'm going to apologize upfront. I'm not doing well on the computer today, so I'm not going to try to share my screen. I did send you all the document, um, that came from Hebron. Um, I also called, um. About five town clerks offices from our surrounding towns to kind of get a feel. For not just what Hebron is doing, but what other towns are Columbia is now. Um, elected, uh, sorry, appointed, um, hired, um, Bolton, same situation, um, Wyndham. So, um, a lot of towns have gone in this direction. Um, the biggest thing you're going to see is that there is a, there is a grave concern. For when a town is doing this, that the clerk's position become isolated, right? So it needs to be isolated from political issues. It needs to be isolated from, say, a town manager that maybe doesn't agree with the town clerk's. Handling of things, but also maybe from a board of selectmen that doesn't agree with it. So there is, um, everyone that I talked to, every clerk said the same thing. Um, that if we go in this direction, we need to reference the state statute. That explains what is required to remove a clerk and that that needs to be the same guideline for an elected clerk. And that we should use that same guideline that says that, um, basically what other towns have done is they say. It has to be, um, that a town manager, um, needs to agree with it. It can't just be board of selectmen, that, um. The board of selectmen needs to agree with the town manager that does it. So there's basically two steps there. Um, and that it has to be for cause. It can't be for, you know, any other willy-nilly. Feelings of, of a, of a manager or a board that, that's upset with the town clerk. It needs to be for cause. Um, and that we should reference that state statute. That being said, they also all said that the reason they went in this direction is that it generally takes about four years to learn the job. And that's how long the term is. So basically you go in, you get going. And four years later, just about the time that you're, you know, the job, um, you got to run again. Um, everyone said that in bigger towns, like say Hartford or West Hartford. A town clerk could be an elected position because you have twenty people in the office, right? So if, if, if the, if the person that's at the top of the pile, um, doesn't know all the statutes and doesn't know every, all the nuances. There's so many people in the office that, that, you know, that the group think. Um, can, can overcome that because there's, there's knowledge within all those people. But when you have such a small office like ours, we have two people. Um, you know, if one person steps away and the other person may not have the institutional knowledge. It's, it's problematic. Um, in Hebron, one of the biggest things pushing them is that. They're worried with a town three times the size of ours, that they don't have enough of a population to put forward a qualified. Town clerk, someone that could learn their job quickly and, uh, and, and get up and running. Um, so they, they feel that this really should be, you know, a hired slash, um, you know, appointed position. So, um, I would say, I think we, I, I, my recommendation is that we, we follow basically what, what Hebron is now attempting to do. Um, and what other towns around us have already done and go in this position, go in this direction. Um, if you have any questions, feel free, I, you know, I had about a twenty-minute conversation with almost all the clerks, so. Hey, Adrian, what's the da- the downside here of moving it to appointed? Right? I mean, I, I like in that, in that, um, what you sounded out from Hebron, thank you, was excellent. But it was funny, I was reading the cons and even the cons were twisted to be pros, the inverse. It was like, so. Right, you know, in my simple head, the only thing is thinking, oh, they're not a town resident, maybe they're not queued into the culture of the town, but.
So there is, there is an, there is an old guard, and this actually is what happened in Hebron. The last time they tried to do this. The, the, the town clerk had been there for, you know, twenty plus, I think it was actually thirty years. And I apologize, I don't have that off the top of my head, but it was, it was a really long time. And at the last minute in the process, she said, listen, I don't, I really. Town charter, our town charter actually has a deference for town residents to be, uh, to be hired for town jobs, right? Um, but there's no, there's nothing that forces a town to file that. So, um, there is always a concern that a, a, a non-resident gets a clerk position. Because the clerk is so ingrained in the community that, and, and it does so much. I mean, you know, Carol's a, Carol Lee is literally the embodiment of that. Think of anything that you go to in town. And imagine that, you know, if you can find something that Carolie does not go to or show up at, I would be hard, it's a hard pressed thing. And that is so common in, in the clerk's position in so many towns, they're so involved. So there is a concern, the con is, what happens if you get someone that just isn't invested in the town? Can, do they just come in and do the job, check the box and leave because they don't live there? Um, that's a possibility. Um, it's a possibility you could hire a town clerk that lives in town though. Um, and, and, and then they move for whatever reason. So, you know, there's, there's, there's nuances to it. Um, that was the one thing that everyone said, they, they, that was their, always their concern, but. It really hasn't been the case. There's been situations where, you know, in each town where either someone's a resident of the town or someone is. Is willing to make that thing. And, and the biggest thing is that the reason that people don't run is there's no job security. Right? So you have to be fairly intelligent and, and I'm not saying this to, to make Carol feel better, but you need, need to be fairly intelligent. You have to have a really good understanding, um, and understand that there are, to put this in perspective. There are over five hundred statutes, I couldn't believe this, but it's true. There's five hundred statutes on the state books that specifically reference the town clerk. That's how involved the job is with state. So, um, you know, uh. It, the, the cons are, uh, an employee that is not connected to the job. That's the con, right? That's the risk. Um, I think we could hopefully, um. I don't think, you know, one thing that was brought up about this is that it should not be a position that is hired by a Board of Selectment. It should not be a position that is hired by a town manager. It should not be a position that's hired by. You, so you don't want just one group to make that decision, that you should at least put together a committee. That then hires the person based on a recommendation. Um, but, but certainly a group, so you might, uh, compose that of. Say two members of a board of selectmen, two members of a board of finance, the town manager, um, maybe someone from the assessor's office. Um, you know, you might even want someone, you know, from the, you certainly want someone from the general public. So you put together a group and that group makes that decision for that, ultimately to hire that person. But it should not be left in one department because this, this person touches so many different areas, you know, so.
Thanks. So Adrian, do you have any specific language recommendations, modifications to the, the charter? I mean, you, you covered a lot of ground and, and touched.
I, I, I don't, and to be honest with you, because this, there's going to be some nuances to this. I did not go digging into the charters to see how it's written yet. I think the next step would be, um, if, if the group feels that we're still going forward with this. Then we, or I should say, I'll take the time to, to reach out and pull some of those charters. And try to codify the language that would work and then we can, you know, pick through it. But I didn't want to spend a lot of time doing that until we, um, until we know that this is, this is going to be something that we're going to, we're, we're going to want to still move forward on. I, I'm, I kind of think it's a no-brainer, but you know, um, you know, it is what it is. It's a group decision, so.
I think we all concur that this is a, a weighty and substantial, uh, issue that, that, you know, deserves our, our full consideration. Um, so who wants to make a motion that we will continue to consider this issue and move forward?
I'll ma- I'll make a motion that we continue to continue this to the next meeting moving forward. And I would come back with language, suggested language for the, for the charter, charter adjustments. I will come up with the language, the charter adjustments. I would ask the town attorney to, um, specifically point to anything in the charter that needs to be removed that's conflicting. That I don't want to take on that responsibility.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion on this subject? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Is there anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Keep doing your homework, Adrian.
Okay. Who's, who's second that? Was that Bob?
I did, yes.
And just as a side note, I think somewhere in the charter, in my reading, that there, um, any, any job Adrian would be. By a group of, any job specific like that would be by a group as you referenced, uh. A member of the Board of Selectmen or two members of Board of Selectmen, and then we do reference in certain places where we take. Um, we would take town clerks from other towns to do the interview process. Just as a side note, so everybody understands that. That is written somewhere. I just read it. I can't find it right. Okay.
Bobby, you're muted.
The dog was barking. Uh, Jeff, you're up, ordinance procedures.
All right, um. In our charter, well, like the first thing I should do is just so everybody understands, because ordinance can mean a lot of different things as it, as it's written.
In our charter, well, like the first thing I should do is just so everybody understands because ordinance can mean a lot of different things as it is written. The definition of an ordinance is a law set forth by government authorities specifically a municipal regulation. So in essence, these ordinances are municipal regulation. And the issue that we really have in our charter, and and just so you understand. We are not solving every issue on the ordinances today because. Um, if you search uh, the charter, there's somewhere in the range of of forty some hundred uh. Ordinance words sprinkled out throughout the charter, different meanings and have different things associated with them. The biggest issue that I would do is because ordinances are. The purview of the board of selectmen right now, but we have a. A minor and a definition of a minor ordinance in our charter that I would totally delete. So section. Um, one oh five definitions, one oh five H minor ordinances, I I would delete that and. Come in with some word that minor ordinance is in effect before the the date that this charter revision becomes uh. Implemented will continue to remain for the board of selectmen to amend and appeal. Um. So the issue ends up being due ordinances and and then. In my analysis, you have to go through the way that an ordinance. If the board of selectmen had the ability to create these ordinances, the other thing for everybody is there's a document on our website. That lists out all the ordinances that have been in place. So I went to see Carol this morning and Eric and. There's a document for our ordinances that's about seventy eight pages long. That lists out the items that are outside of the charter and a lot of these are. Not currently uh. I mean, I wouldn't sit there and say, Carol, all these followed, but Carol would know better than I would, but I would sit there and say, there's so many ordinances and they go back so far. With so many little dollar amounts, we really as a town need to probably clean up our entire entire ordinance collection. But the issue ends up being believing that with the word minor ordinance and allowing. The board of selectmen to uh, be able to. Put in place ordinances. Um. And if if need be, because there's so much uh. See, this is the whole thing. I don't want to go to town meeting for for this type of, these types of transactions. So I would recommend uh, and and I. I think we need to do exactly what we just did with the town clerk, which is say, okay, we're going to move forward with this. And the one thing that I did identify is eliminating the minor ordinances. Uh, allowing the board of selectmen to continue in its uh, in its same authority and um. You know, you would give in section three oh one, the general section, you would make a change. In that area to include, but not limiting the authority to prove an act of appeal and modify all ordinances after a public hearing. So you're still going to have the public here. You're still going to have the public be able to communicate to you on this. Um, but you're, you're going to allow the board of selectmen to allow. After that public hearing to enact the ordinances and, you know, right now we have. Section four oh two that sits there and says, you know, the town meeting um, has the ability to enact. Of what's considered or identified as major ordinance. So my issue is. Eliminate the difference between minor and major, allow the board of selectmen to enact and implement uh, a. An ordinance after a public hearing and then we move on to the issues of how would ordinance. If the public disagreed with it be overturned and that ends up falling into. You know, section three oh five about petitions to town meeting, where you know. And I'm telling you, and I think everybody would understand, if if the board of selectmen made an ordinance or enacted an ordinance that everybody didn't like. There's two things that would happen. One is you would petition to get. The ordinance revoked and removed, and you wouldn't vote for those selectmen in future election. It's the value of democracy. That's basically where I I am at. If I was, you know, if we could approve that, if we wanted to move forward with that, I would have the town attorney. Uh, suggest appropriate language for the various sections that are impacted by ordinances within the town charter.
I. Um, I my opinion on this, in order for me to support it. I would want two things to happen. I would want there'd be a hundred and twenty day delay before an ordinance goes into effect. And and the second one would be that um. I would want to see instead of a ten percent requirement for um, signatures collected, let's lower that to five percent. And then it would automatically go to a a town vote.
Think in my read of this, the number is way lower than ten percent.
Is it really?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't read that section and I didn't see anything from you quantifying it. I I I know when. In in I think in state statute, it's actually a ten percent. So if we have something lower, that's great.
Forty two percent, forty nine resident.
Forty nine residents.
Petition forty nine residents can cause a town meeting?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Would you do, would you do it to a town meeting though, or would you do it? So my, I guess my thought was, the number was higher. And. Instead of doing a town meeting, because you, again, this goes back to the whole idea of having as many people have a say in these things as possible. You just hold the ordinance and put it on the next ballot that you've got going. So if it happens. If it happens over the winter, right, between November and the referendum vote, you could throw it. Out at the same time, you know, for the budget. If it happens after the budget cycle, but before November, it would fall into the November vote cycle. And you would just, you don't have to have something separate. It's an ordinance. It's not something that has to be passed today, obviously. You just throw it on the next ballot and let people vote on it, but make the number higher, you know?
And I just throw in that Hebron section four zero five of their charter, current charter. Power of overrule ordinances adopted by the board of selectmen. So all actions of the board of selectmen and ordinances except emergency ordinance. Shall be subject to a special referendum in the following manner. So it outlines that a petition must be filed within twenty days after final action by the board of selectmen. Two percent of the electors of the town of Hebron and Hebron of town much larger than us, only two percent. As determined by the latest official registry. And request that the ordinance be submitted to the voters of the town for special referendum. So it spells out a procedure, so it's still. It doesn't give the board of selectmen this right to. Well, you still would have the right to enact ordinance, but then the electors of town would be able to come forward with. That of registered voter's signatures. To force a referendum on.
So if we use, if we use that, it'd be seventy people, give or take, right? Thirty five hundred electors?
Percent.
Yeah. Fathers, guys, girls?
Sounds reasonable, Adrian.
Have to be some type of protection for the people if we were going to move forward and allow. For the selectmen now um, to do that. Another way to do it would be to more. Clearly defined, and I know it's hard to define minor and major, but we could give examples. Um, I was just kind of looking around different larger towns and they have. Extended examples of a minor ordinance. That are allowed to enact.
Yeah. Kind of felt like we have elected officials and we. You know, they're not going to go off the rails, but the public needs some fail safe mechanism in case there's discourse. So. I kind of liked the idea of. You know, I didn't like this major minor, it gets definitions always get hard. So I think the path Jeff was on. Was some modification from Adrian. I think works, at least from my view, which is giving the board of selectmen who we all have elected. A little bit of continuing that flexibility to put something in place, but then giving the and giving notice, I think that's what. Adrian wants, not that, you know, notice is fine, except I do see sometimes there could be an emerging thing. Um. Um, but then what's the, it sounded like there was some recourse, what's the recourse if town didn't, townspeople don't like it, sending it to.
It goes down.
Right?
It go, it goes down how? Oh, you mean if they can, well, Carol was saying they'd have to get two percent, which would be seventy people in our town.
To do what? What happens?
After, okay, wait, 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 wait. Current process of Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, is an ordinance goes to a town meeting and gets voted up or down. That for major ordinances, town meeting, up or down. What we're saying is we're eliminating the town meeting up or down, and now we're dealing with the recourse, Jody, as to how. If it is a negative ordinance that that a group of residents believes and they can get enough. Um, the two percent of the electors, which is low for me, it's low. I understand Hebron is, what is it, Carol, three times our size with the number of electors? So the actual number of people that they have to get to is is greater. So um. I would sit there and I I could, I could, I could under, I could live with the the. I could live with. A group of individuals in the town not agreeing with an ordinance and putting it on the next available ballot. That's what I would ask, no special, no special reference. I mean, I'm trying to avoid. Extra work for people like, um, so Adrian's request was a hundred and twenty days, right? Carol, your your issue was. How how we. How we allow the residents to revoke. An ordinance, right?
Right, because well, the way Hebron does it is they have a public hearing and publication. So the board of selectmen, if they're going to enact an ordinance, have to have at least one public hearing. Notice of which have to be given five business days before. And then um, you hold that public hearing before you pass the ordinance. But then it also gives the public an easier, there's a statutory petition process too. But this would be clearly spelled out in the charter. And the people would understand, and I hear what Adrian is saying on the next election. But if, you know, you pass the ordinance the day after the November election, right? Um, would you say that that would be on our budget referendum that ordinance?
I'm okay, I'm okay, honestly, I'm okay with the. I just want to make sure we have something easy and clear. If if I have no problem with with adopting what Hebron has done. Um, with, you know, maybe we just make a slight modification and give a little more time for people to get the 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 seventy people or whatever is they're going to need in town. Um, maybe it's a little easier in Hebron to do that because they have, you know, they have a lot more.
Have a large population, right?
Seventy people triggered though, is that a a a town meeting?
Uh, a town, a town referendum, right? Or a town meeting.
So what it triggers is the number required for the petition. So this power of overrule for ordinances, right? With Hebron, a petition must be filed within twenty days after the final action by the board of selectmen. So if you're saying to extend it, Adrian, to give them forty five days in which to obtain the petition. There's a petition form that they would have to obtain from.
And but but what Jody's asking is, from there, do we go to? A town meeting or do we go to a referendum vote?
It would go straight to a referendum if they came in with the required number of petition signature.
I'm good with that. I'd be good with that as long as we move it from, you know, twenty days to, you know, thirty or forty five, either one would work for me.
So I want to see if I understand this right. We're saying that the board of selectmen can pass. An ordinance, and if the town doesn't like it, they can petition to get a referendum to overturn the ordinance?
Yes.
If the commission is moved forward with allowing board selectmen to enact ordinances, yes, this is a protection. For the residents of Andover. To get that overturned. Now in Hebron, what they do is they have um. That if the ordinance, um, they have within thirty days have to hold the referendum. If they have the required number of signatures, so we'd have. That date as to when we would have to have the referendum. Right now petitions, people can petition by statute, bring it forward to the board of selectmen if they deem it a privileged petition, they don't have to act on it. Just be. Set us up. Um, so they're petitioning for it. This is a city run out, you know, a standard plain procedure.
Okay, and and I don't have any issues with the public hearing, uh, waiting period, um, enactment. I think. What we have to sit there and consider is. If. If you give them forty five day residents enough time to get signatures and they get signatures, it's a question of when that referendum occurs. And how it falls within the calendar, you know, so to me, I'm sitting there always looking at this going, it can wait. I don't care if it waited three hundred and sixty five days, like we would never be, I mean, as long as I would be on board of selectmen, we would never put. An ordinance on the agenda, the the December meeting right after an election and and. Calls problems. I mean, I just ask everybody like to look at. You know, when we uh, give the community the ability to. Go to referendum or go to town meeting, it does take time and costs us money. So. And that's all I ask everybody to think about. It's like, when does it go to referendum? Not a special referendum for and.
Are you, are you okay with it just holding over then? I I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we did it, we looked at the town meeting we just did, we held it over everything for, you know, months and months and months.
Does anyone else have an objection with it, once it gets then getting held over to the next, so we don't have to spend money on a special referendum?
I have one other question for you, Adrian. You mentioned that any new ordinance would have an automatic hundred twenty day stay. Um, what's the purpose of that?
Well, it gives you two things. It gives you the the petitioning time, right? And and then so your petitioning time then, um, I I also think that it gives a legal authority if someone. For whatever reason wants to challenge it beyond a petitioning or say rejection of petition, whatever, whatever. It it puts it in a holding pattern until until that those processes can play out. That's all.
I mean, I I. I thought we just reduced to hundred and twenty days to.
Yeah, we can, we can reduce it. I don't, I don't have a problem reducing it, but I, but again. As long as we have these other metrics in place, I'm fine with that. And I I'm open to any suggestions. Like I have no problem. I think Carol Lee's suggestion, you know, Hebron has a good thing that works. Let's do that. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, you know?
Okay, so I I don't have a problem with what Carol said from Hebron's perspective.
I mean, you just want to hold it, you just want to hold it over.
I just don't want everybody to just run out and get a petition.
Right.
Of forty five voters and then we're required.
Seventy, in our case seventy, but yep.
Okay, um, seventy, um.
Two percent of thirty five hundred.
So Adrian, we typically have around twenty three hundred registered voters in the town. So two percent would be.
It's twenty three hundred? I thought it was thirty three hundred.
I mean, I thought I looked it up on the state.
Thirty three is our population, Adrian.
Oh, I'm sorry, I I apologize.
Okay, it's about twenty three registered.
Apologize, Eric, you are correct, twenty three it is.
Yeah, twenty three hundred. So it's, in in essence, off of the state information, it was, I I did the math on that section. Two percent of its forty nine residents.
What are you, an accountant now or something?
Yeah, you know, you told me to do some research and Bob gave me a list that he gave me a list of things I had to do. I went out and did it. Sorry. Um, but yeah, forty nine people and they can sit there and and file a petition. I'm okay with that. I'm okay, just I do not want to see the town have to absorb a special referendum.
That's fine, especially with the number being so low. Yeah, so we hold over. Does anyone have objection to a holdover?
Why not talk about raising the number from two percent to five percent?
And just to let you know, if we had a referendum where we had paper ballots and we do. And count, it really is not that expensive. The same.
It it is not, it is not, but we now have to pay for our registered voters and everybody we have to call them in for all these individual items.
We could also set the referendum hours from noon until eight. That leads to eight hours. Is fourteen, right?
What's it, what's it cost us for the mailer, Carol? Was it like a couple of grand?
Mailer, it's about three to four hundred dollars.
Is that it?
That's it. And because right now we're doing the uh, half sheet postcard. And then if we do the hand count, which it does not take a lot of time, paper ballots are made here in house, just like for any budget meeting. And we could have. Registered voters.
So Jeff.
Okay, okay, we can't even get.
Jeff, you did your homework. You did your homework. Can we do the same thing with yours? Can we have you quantify it in a? In a statement and we'll vote on it next week, next next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely. So I just want to make sure so. Public hearing, uh, uh, a hold time. To allow for a petition.
Yep.
And then the issue related to the referendum would be held over until a regularly scheduled election.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So 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 the ordinance stays in effect until then? Is that how?
No, no, it's.
No.
No, because once if if they didn't get it in within the forty-five days, it'd go into effect. If they did get it in, then it would be held because it has to go to refer.
It's paused until the following, when it's aggregated. Okay, got it. Got it. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I do, I do. Wait, Bob, one thing, I do believe we should sit there and and put on next week's agenda. The section three oh five petition count meetings and the percentage of voters required for that type of petition.
Put it, put it all in your, in what you want us to vote on next week.
But it wouldn't be a petition town meeting, Jeff, it would be similar to what. Or exactly what Hebron wrote. Power of overrule ordinance adopted by the Board of Selectmen. It wouldn't be a special town meeting because the petition would force referendum here.
Understood, understood. All right, let me, let me make a motion here, okay, that we let's, let's, uh, wrap up discussion on this. We're in general agreement on what needs to happen. Uh, Jeff, you're going to. Turn, make make concrete out of your, out of your ideas, you know, give us some specific language where it's appropriate on the ordinance side. As well as any other parts of the, um. The charter that get affected such as as the town meetings as you see fit, and you can present those things to us next week. So that was kind of a rambling motion there that we continue this to next week, that we all approve to move forward.
Yeah, why does it have to be a motion?
It, because.
It doesn't. We're not enacting anything.
Yeah, well, okay. We don't do, if we don't do these motions, Bob does not get to feel like being a chair. It's important for him. So we need to do this for Bob. This is us supporting Bob. So Bob, I'm gonna second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's move on.
I'll abstain.
You're abstaining, Bob. That's just mean, Jody. It's really mean.
That's fine. Okay, so I'm up again. Uh, the next item is, uh. Uh, not electing first selectmen, instead having a chairperson, um, that is elected by the Board of Selectmen, as is done in the. Board of Education and Board of Finance. Um. I've done some research on this. The language changes in the charter are actually very simple, so simple that I haven't written it up yet. There are a few additional things, though, that I want to look into regarding, uh, state law, because state law talks about, uh, uh. First select, first selectmen quite a bit, and I want to make sure that we're not running afoul of anything in there before we we move forward with this. And I just want to, as an aside, um, one of the things that was mentioned at the first meeting. Uh, was can we modernize our language and simplify it and, you know, come into, uh, alignment with, uh. Modern language, which, uh, the way that that I took it was, among other things, gender neutrality. Um, I looked at what people are calling a board of selectmen in other places, and the terminology that I found was. Board of selectors or selectors, you know, instead of a selectman, a selector. Um, and we could certainly go ahead. There's about two hundred places in the charter where that lang- where select man or select men occurs. The problem arises. In that Connecticut state law still uses the term board of selectmen and selectmen. And we have kind of a, an a, a responsibility and and a charge to stay in alignment. With what the state law does, and I so, you know, I'm not even going to suggest that we go that route, um, until the state does, and you know. What they do, we can follow, but, you know, it's it's opening up a can of worms if we were to to try to go down that. It's, like I said, just a digression, but it was brought up at the. The the first meeting, modernizing the language. So I looked at it and I said, no, this is, this is not the way that we're gonna go. Actually, I I chatted with a few other people who who concurred the same way. So I'm gonna come back next week with some more concrete language and hopefully places where this touches state law and doesn't run afoul of it.
Well, here on Jeopardy next week, we'll have language for all of these things to go.
Uh huh. I'll take it for two hundred, Alex. Um, all right. That brings us to Jody, increasing the number of candidates allowed for the Board of Selectmen.
Sure, let me share screen.
Can you do that or do I have to do that for you?
Um, I think I can.
Let me see.
Share.
There you go. What's that little engine that could? I think I can't remember what is.
Funny, here we go. Uh, if I can get, pull this. Uh, nope, wrong document. Hold on, that's.
Oh, you're using the Mac, huh?
Yes, the minutes I'm typing here.
Which explains why it's taking so long.
Ha, here we go. Um, so I think the idea I was asked to evaluate is to increase the number of nominees for the Board of Selectmen by each political party. Um, and I think Adrian said maybe possibly to four from each party. Um, and I think, believe the rationale was really to try to increase the competitive nature with more candidates. Um, having some form of contested election, surface more ideas, constructive debate on improvements for our town. Um, Carol pointed me to section two oh three of the charter. That states a political party may nominate no more than three members, one of whom shall be designated nominee for the office of first selectmen. Um, and I think we have an item, and maybe I just missed it, where we're gonna change, not actually have a first selectmen, but potentially. Have that as a, um. As someone that's, um, uh, decided by the Board of Selectmen and not voted, but regardless, it. It, I don't think it matters in in this case. So the background is the current Board of Selectmen has five members. Uh, with a requirement for minority representation, I think effectively ensuring a three-two split on the board. Um, and the current ballot has voters selecting three representatives. So. Um, I think, Bob, you had asked for what's the implementation or transition here, and this. I think would be simple is to change to a language in the charter, um, and each party could submit. Whatever number of nominations I used for, um, for this ballot. Pros and cons, um, I think this is more choice because you have more people on the ballot. Um, and you may get more people involved in the political process. The con is that. I was kind of struggling because it may not have any impact. If the political parties choose not to increase the number of nominees due to diluting the votes of the top three. So these, so I really came up with three, two questions for for folks, because honestly, this didn't make sense. I i in part of me was like, from the math perspective, I wasn't quite sure why a party would want to do it. So why would a party want to put four names? If they're trying to get three, uh, three of two. Um, and. And I guess, and then I asked myself, is the rationale for this change already being achieved within? The political parties, right? I like, uh, you know, the caucuses for the parties, or is there multiple candidates coming forward? So that's what I thought through on this and open to any corrections or conversation. Let me bring down, we stopped sharing. Here. If I can figure out how to do that. Stop share. There you go. So it didn't make sense to me, but, um, I'm open to thoughts here. Maybe maybe the idea surfaced as part of another idea that we continued to pull forward, but, um.
Is this coming from you as a Mac user or?
Well, I'm sorry, I don't understand your reference.
They question your judgment. That's all. What do you, I mean, you know, given your choice of operating system.
Ah, okay, got it. You're poking. Um, yeah, no, I guess if I was sitting in a Democratic or Republican caucus and I wanted to win three of two, right? And maybe I have that assumption wrong, that it's always has to be three-two. Um, it's like, why would you put four? On a ballot? And spread your, and you only had three choices, you would be spreading your numbers, right?
Would, but you would still be allowing the elect. Vote. That number of candidates. You know, you'd increase the number that they can vote for. And how does? The caucus, the caucus doesn't know who's gonna be popular at. At election. So. Have. We have better odds. You don't know who's gonna be. You might be more, you're gonna be more popular than I am on the Board of Select. Ballot. You know, you don't know who the elect is.
Got it. So you're suggesting a caucus could say, I want to put four because. More, more options, more possibility that one of these is gonna strike. Gold with the, with the, with the town in some way. Um, but the other part that the contrarian side of that is, well, then you're kind of. You know, does it, or does it spread the vote? So, but.
Yeah, I mean.
Maybe leave that to the caucuses. I don't care, you know?
This gets complicated, though. I mean, like, you know. I think the only reason Jeff beat me is because he was Santa Claus and I was the Grinch, right? It could be that you lose to me because you're a Mac user and I'm a, you know, I'm a, I'm a Windows guy, who knows? But I'm just. I don't, I don't know. I. I think I there, I think her, you know, Carol's point is true, though, that that. Um. You know, caucuses are trying sometimes to make a a hard. Decision, um, and I think. Giving the public. A little bit wider choice if it's available can be a good thing. I do. I do worry, though, that you end up with, um. As you start, I mean, we're having a hard enough time getting enough people on to the run for these things in the first place. You can end up with a situation where. You know, four Republicans. End up, you know, running against two Democrats or three Democrats, right? So you, you can end up with, you know, we just can't get enough people to fill all those spots that want to run. So. You know what I mean? You can end up with a very lopsided situation there as well, and it it gets even more lopsided when you start. Spreading out the vote over eight people, you know? So.
Um, it's true, but if we increase the number of blackboard can vote for, because on the Board of Finance. We have our major minister. Four members of the seven-member Board of Finance are left. Voters can vote for people. They can vote for up to four. Be restricted. For when we. Divide it with the first left Board of Select, they can only vote for one for her. And then two on the Board of. And five are going to be. So if we were to open. If. Any did decide to emanate first selectmen and just. Were obsolete and let them elect their chair. And. And we did do. Each elector vote.
Carol, Carol, I don't mean to interrupt you. Can you just either lean forward a little, pull the mic towards?
Okay, I I don't know if there's something wrong with this microphone, but, um, I'm just saying it would increase the number that each elector can vote. So if. Each town committee could nominate. Let's say four people. Uh, run for the Board of Select. Then we could increase the number that the elector can vote for. Five. Rather than one for first selection and two for. If you're opening up that way, so do it like we do for the Board of Finance. Four seats are up, you can vote for members.
I think that works well on a seven-member board, though, right? Is Board of Finance seven?
That is correct, yes.
It kind of makes sense.
It's also staggered. There's also staggered terms.
Right, right.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm interested in your thinking on this. I know you were one of the folks, you kind of brought this forward, but I didn't know if it was part of a package of other things originally.
Well, I was, uh, a bully, I'm a believer that they should appoint, and a seven-member board, I believe it's it's effective to appoint. Uh, the chairperson, um. I would sit there and tell you under our current, current structure, I would sit there and get rid of the whole. The, the first selectmen office is you run for it and you win or lose. If you win, you're in, you're, you lose, you're out. And and you don't get the roll off into the select board. Um. And then you should have. Each party should be, should, should put up six members or three candidates each for six positions. And then they get to, um. Win either three positions or or two positions, because you're still gonna have minority interest. So if the first selectman wins and he's a Democrat, then you're gonna only have another. Two democratic positions available. If he's a Republican, same thing. So, um. I will tell you, Jody. The issues from a. Um. A caucus are going to be, for the most part, very. They're, they're gonna watch out for their party. It's just the reality of it. You're gonna watch out for your party, and. If you have two solid candidates that are gonna get on there and you, you, you sit there and you split the vote somehow, um. You know, like the Democrats this, this cycle put up, uh. Three candidates to the three candidates, and we didn't have anymore, but three candidates to the. The Democrats only had two seats. They put up a third candidate. They they really ran, uh, that one individual candidate very hard. That candidate got more votes. Um, and. Some of those things are unfortunate, but if you sat there and you didn't let votes roll over from the Board of Selectmen, then people would make decisions as to where they would need to be. So I I actually think you run the first selectmen as its own race, and then you have four positions on the the board. And you put up as many candidates as you think, because you know you can get up to three of those potential seats, depending upon what happens.
I I'm sorry, I guess I missed, Bob, what was that? I missed our conversation on not having a first selectmen, instead having a chairperson elected. That was be. Conversation before.
Yeah, so are we going back on that now?
No, 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 I, I, well, listen, I'm telling you, all of these issues are potentially. Not moving forward because they may not get approved. You have to realize that every, every issue that's coming up from us is gonna end up in front of the Board of Selectmen, and it only takes two people to vote against one of the items we bring up. For it not to move forward. So you have to be cognizant of the fact that things may not always turn out the way we want them.
Why does it, why is it two? Why is it a five-person board? Can't three?
Because you have to have eighty percent. You have to have eighty percent of the Board of Selectmen approve the charter revision.
That's okay, that's just on charter revision.
Yeah.
Got it. And is it in totality, or can there be modifications that come back?
No, I would hope we'd put these out as individual items, and then you'd allow the board to sit there and pick the individual items.
Okay.
So we get, get ten items in and one item fails and we move on.
But if you have something that's. If we have something that we put together, like, for instance, um. We're moving a budget referendum and we're also adjusting something, you know, or in this case, you have. Um, candidates and you have the select board. You could group those together and say, we want to do this. Because that one is, one really doesn't work without the other. Right? We could ask the Board of Selectmen to put those together if we felt that's appropriate.
Yep.
Yeah, so I I guess I was operating under the, the, the assumption that it's three people put up by, it's the five-member board. With today's world is three. Uh, that are nominated from each party. I was sort of in my mind, operating whether, whether it's a separate first, so I was operating where it wasn't really a first selectmen world, right? Where, where each party just puts up three, and then that board, I guess I was assuming number seven on our list or that. That item where we were gonna just have the board select the chairperson and not.
I I I kind of thought we're having that same conversation.
Okay.
No, and you are, and I'm telling you to be careful related to those items. Because. You're, you're asking, you, okay, let's sit there and go to your whole issue. You have, you have a five-member board, that's all we have. And you want to put up three candidates. And you want to put up three candidates, so that means one person is gonna lose.
Yes. But that's what we have today, right?
That's, that's basically what we have today. I mean, we have, we had, you, you, you. The way that I believe it's written is you have to have three candidates and one of those individuals has to run for the first selection.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and so, so again, I just didn't understand why we wanted to add a worth mathematically, it just kind of felt funny. I mean, Carol's trying to play devil's advocate and say, well, it gives people more choice and they might hit, you know, strike gold, and I get that. But if I was a strategist at the caucus, I guess I, I don't know. Go ahead, add one more point.
So, can we, clarification, because I, I'm, I'm totally, I'm totally lost here, and I'm trying not to swear, because my brain goes there. Um, uh. What are we doing exactly? Are we actually talking about, are we talking about these as one issue or not? Because honestly, if we're doing it for the whole board, then I think the four works. If we're doing it and we're not changing the board, you know, they, to an elected. Or if we're keeping an elected first selectman versus a, a, um, a selected by the board, um, selectman, first selectman. Like, one, one, one I'm in favor of and one I'm not. Like, if we get, we eliminate the first selectman position as a, as an elected position that you run for, then I think the four works. I think if you're not eliminating it, then, you know, then maybe it doesn't.
Bob, back to you, buddy. I think you had the one on the first selectman, right?
Yeah, and like I said, I haven't, I. What I've come up with is that it's a simple thing for us to do. Uh, linguistically, logistically, you know, the modifications to the, to the actual charter are fairly limited. Um, what I'm not sure of is what the implications are vis a vis how our charter lines up with state law. For example, uh, it doesn't say it in our charter, but state law talks about how the first selectman is the chief of police. Uh, but, but then it, the, the state law also doesn't, it deliberately says, we don't have a definition for what chief of police means. And so. Other places, but other places have chief of police is that are, are pointed or come from within the ranks. So. I, I don't know that we got to get into the nuances of that. Well, what I'd like us to do is, can we at least? Ask everyone on the board to give their opinion as to how they want to move forward on this, yea or nay, and, and, and whether they want. Are we grouping these together? And because, you know, do they want four, not want four? Like, I think we need to figure out what the heck we're doing. Excuse my French. Carol, how many, how many, um, positions do we have on the ballot or a ballot? Are we limited by state statute?
That, no, we can, by charter, they. The number, we are limited by state statute.
Carol, please, we can't hear you. Then why not open it up to everywhere? Why put a limitation on the number that a party can put up? I mean, a party is not putting up more than three people. I'm just telling you with the current strategy, Jody, it's just math. Why would you ever do that?
That was the conclusion I came to with a five-person board, and you're trying to win three.
You're trying to win three?
Winning three is because we do greater than minority rep on our Board of Selectmen and our local board.
We do it on every board. We do it on every major board, the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen. Yeah.
We do. Nope, we follow state statute for minority rep on the Board of Finance. The only boards we have are. That minority rep is defined by our charter. We do greater than our minority rep is. Selectmen and the local.
I thought it was also done on P and Z.
No, P and Z.
Well, to, to make this simple, I don't have a motion to put forward on increasing the number, because it didn't make sense to me. So if someone else would like to make that a motion, or, or, um. Or combine it with something else, we can. Otherwise, I would scratch this off.
Does it make sense if we eliminate the, um, you know, we, we're talking about if it goes one way, if we were to. Uh, not have the first selectman as elected, does it still make sense to have three and three on the ballot? Or does it, at that point, make sense to have four and four? I think then it makes sense to go four and four personally.
Why, why, Adrian? If you're only electing three. Like, take me through the logic. Why do you think that helps?
Well, I think that, I personally think that it gives you a, a better opportunity to put up four candidates that. You know, that move down that list. Um, you don't, again, you don't know how candidates are gonna, are gonna actually poll with the, with the, with the, with the public. I mean, I could, I could personally tell you that. I've seen candidates that got into an election and I thought, there's no way they're gonna get votes, and they did. And then you have candidates that you put up that you thought were a shoe-in, and they didn't even, they didn't even show. So I think the caucus. It gives the caucus more opportunity to put up quality candidates, um, and put up more diverse candidates by doing that. And I think that's more important when you, when one of those candidates may or may not be moved up to the, to the first, the first chair, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I'll, I'll, I'll say this, I don't see a downside to it. Um, it kind of puts it in the caucus's hands to figure out what strategy that they might want.
Right. I mean, I'm all for more people running, but I just don't see the logic. I don't see why. And, and to be really honest, I was, I was, I'm not on the Democratic Town Committee. Um. So I can't sit there and tell you that, uh, but I know if I was advising the Democratic Town Committee, I would tell them. You don't want to put up any more than three people, because you want to maximize your, your ability to get votes, especially with what Carol said is. Is we could only vote for two people on the selectman line. And, and it should be select member or select person. And you could vote for one person on the selectman, first selectman line. So you're minimizing that. And if you spread that out, if you put four people up and a certain. You know, a certain appeal is to vote for a Democrat, you might not pick the Democrat that has the most votes. Because then you, you're competing back against who is gonna win three seats on the board. So, so mathematically, it doesn't work.
Got it. But so it sounds like we have a gating issue though, and maybe Adrian or Jeff, you're saying this too. It's like, maybe we need to. Figure out the first selectman or appointed from within the board and then come back to the number.
I'm fine with that. Moving on then to the, to next week's, uh.
Or just, they say, if we want to open that up and do four and four, and you allow the electors to vote for any five. Because on the Board of Finance.
Agreed. I, I, I totally agree. And that's my, and that's my point.
Right. So, so the voters are kicking those members, just like on the Board of Finance. There are four seats up. When this past November, there were four seats up. So each party could nominate four members. So, and the elector could vote any four. So this way, if you open up the Board of Selectmen the same way, where you each. I mean, a town committee can put up four. Voters can vote five, and then they would, if we opt to go that way, then the elected Board of Selectmen would. Who's the chairman and vice versa.
And, and this is, Carol, where I was going with the town council, in that it would be four members running in one cycle. And then in the next cycle, there would be three members. And that makes sense to me. But when you're voting all for five and you only have a limited number of candidates. You're, you're basically selecting who you don't want on the committee. And, and that's okay. Everybody can, we can call, come out of our minds, but the math for what Jody's dealing with doesn't work. The.
Or we could also create the staggered Board of Selectmen. Because the transition is already written out in chapter ten of our town charter. And it shows the transition, how we phased in when we were going on a five-member planning and zoning commission. How we phased in so that we have three and two staggered terms. That's not difficult to do that. So when we had our minor municipal election, obviously, we've all been elected. Years, phases. Seven. But what we would do, that will be our major election. We would have three members of the Board of Selectmen have their seat.
Understood.
And, and like I say, just follow chapter ten for the transitions, same thing we did when we initiated our first charter in nineteen ninety.
I brought this issue up two meetings ago about P and Z staggered terms and asked why we do it. And Jeff responded, P and Z is not as political as, uh, Board of Selectmen is. I believe that was your explanation.
But it's also continuity on the board to intent of knowledge to share with me.
Yeah, but the, uh, party minority representation, how do you deal with that with staggered? Seems odd, right? Like if, if the two Republicans are up and it's a three to two.
But it's four and one, minority rep on a five-member board.
Oh, it's four and one. It could happen four, one.
Correct.
Oh, that changes my thinking.
Charter gave the Board of Selectmen and our local Board of Education have greater minor, minority representation. We did that by charters.
Oh, so it is three, two by charter.
By our charter, correct.
By our charter. Okay, all right. All right. Well, Bob, I think we need to move forward here.
Yeah, we're, we're at a gating point. So if we have, uh, a, a chairperson type first selectman. Then the four and four makes sense. If, if it's separately elected, then it doesn't make sense. Um, I think what you can do for us, Jody, is if you can formalize the language, you know, so that we at least know what we're dealing with. When we move forward, because if we do go with a chairperson versus a first selectman, then we would need. The, the additional four and four language to go with it.
Yeah, it's, it's changing one word, three to four.
Yeah.
That's simple.
Okay.
Right, Carol?
There's no other implications, modifications, that, that's great. Okay, then I'll continue to do what I'm doing and your job is pretty much done on that item. We've talked this out. All right. Um, the next item. Town meetings adjustments, merge the Board of Finance budget, public hearing and town meeting, where finance can adjust budget on the fly. Uh, was that subsumed in?
Yes.
What we talked for forty-five minutes.
Yes, it was for forty-five minutes, yes.
I mean, I lost you want to talk about it for another forty-five, Bob.
No, I'm good. I don't want to talk anymore about.
I'm getting hungry. Yeah. Very, very hungry. I ate before. Okay, so we do have an item ten here now that we added, which is the supplemental appropriation amount, which would trigger a referendum vote. And that's Adrian's.
Yeah, so I.
Come back with that next week. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's everything that we had. Designated from last week. Um, let me just go through it real quickly, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Um, the dollar amounts to trigger town meetings, we approved the changes. The early voting and dates of elections, we approved the changes. Um, and we have continued. To next week to have formalized and, uh, to integrate our discussions into the recommendations. The referendum voting, aligning the Board of Ed, et cetera, et cetera, the town clerk position, uh, ordinance procedures. And, uh, the first selectman versus elected versus chairperson.
Yeah, and, um, just for the, and so sending everything to Kate Morrissey. But also, if you could include me on, Bob, in particular, your, what you redlined, because I think I need to put some of that in a minute. And then Karen, your language, is that, is that, when it goes to Kate, make sure it comes to me, because I'll add it to the minutes too.
All right, I'll send it to everybody, including Kate.
Thank you.
Okay, one other thing I wanted to mention. So the, the descriptions that we have here of these, these items. Uh, we need, we need to have this working item list to be fleshed out into, I'm guessing, three or four sentences for each item. Um, what we have now is a little too brief and can't be readily, I don't think could be readily understood by anybody who isn't, you know, intimately involved in, in the process. And the goal with what I'm saying, fleshing this out into, into something readable, is, uh, I'm envisioning that we submit this list. To the town attorney to be crafted into the specific language, you know, that would, that would go on a ballot at some point. Or at least the specific language whenever we talk about this thing, rather than this, this kind of shorthand that we have. So some of these things I can do, others, I don't know that I understand. All of them well enough. I think I'm gonna get together with you, Carol. I think between the two of us, we can formalize that and into something that, that reads a little bit better.
Okay.
And, uh, one other bookkeeping element, we haven't approved any of the, uh, the minutes yet. Um. Carol, you've kind of sent out minutes and Jody has sent out minutes. And, um, I think some of Jody's stuff needs to be included in Carol's stuff. And so I think one of the things to put on next week's agenda is to, um, you know, offline, let's, let's get everything put together so that it's as comprehensive. And readable as we can. And then we can add that as a, as an agenda item that we, uh, modify and approve for the record.
And I'll make a motion to approve all those minutes.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? More in favor?
Bob, sorry about this. I don't think you can do that because it's not on your agenda. Sorry.
You don't think we can do what?
Approval minutes, if they're not on your agenda.
It was special meeting agendas in approval minutes. We have to put that on our agenda for next week. And that's probably better to do, because then Jody and I can fix, well, I jumped in on Jody's minutes. So we can fix the minutes so they're correct. And then next week, we'll just have that on the agenda.
I misunderstood what Karen was moving there, I'm sorry.
Yes, next week add it to the agenda.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, Karen, I thought you were, you were volunteering to review the minutes. That, that's what I heard, so.
I didn't say that.
Well.
Bob, I think I heard that too. Did anyone else hear that?
Could you be just a little more expressive, Karen? Yeah. Yeah, Karen, we, just, just for the sake, we have to have the minutes in front of us in order to, you know, in order to approve them, so. Okay.
Okay.
Anybody want to?
I make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
Public comment.
Oh, right, sorry.
It's on the agenda.
Uh, that's on the agenda, sorry. Moving on to public comment. Shannon, do you have something to contribute?
Always, Bob. Um, thank you. I'm sorry, I'll make it really brief. Um, if you want to look at the stuff about bifurcated referendum, it's eight oh three C and D. And what I read in that is, well, anyway, we'll just go on with it. Um, my four cents, because of inflation, is that I think that the town clerk should be elected instead of appointed. Um, and just to affirm that, I think if the town clerk is doing a good job, as Carol has done for twenty-six years. Um, that person is gonna get reelected. Um, I don't know how a disconnected person or somebody who's not well-known in the community or hasn't done the job for a long time would in fact get elected. And I don't think it should be left up to even a committee, uh, much less one department. I think it should be up to the electorate. Um, with regard to your ordinance, um, I really like that the, uh. What I think should happen is the Board of Selectmen should put forward the language for an ordinance. There should be, um, a period of review, not a hundred and twenty days, but a period of review for consideration by the town. Um, because then if you've got that consideration, you could avoid, um, a petition town meeting. Um, in other words, if the electorate likes it, you then just go forward with, uh, the referendum that was proposed or whatnot. But if it doesn't like it, maybe the Board of Selectmen reconsider's, because they've put it out for consideration, uh, for review by the town. And you could avoid all this voting that, that was discussed. And you talk about two percent, that's, yeah, about forty-five people, from what I could gather, section three oh five talks about. Section three oh five talks about the number of registered voters as electors. And final thing, just sorry, I'm looking at my notes. Um, I don't think that what you're talking about, just as far as the language of section three oh five is concerned, if there's a petitioning town meeting to address anything, um, I don't, you guys were talking about an ordinance, uh, excuse me, a referendum with regard to your consideration of the ordinance. And I don't think there's a referendum vote, at least now as it stands. And Carol, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's, you've got a petitioning town meeting and then it's determined by the town meeting, not at a referendum vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Shannon. Leanne, do you have anything to contribute?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Nothing at this time.
All right. If we are done with public speak, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Snacking in.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for your assistance.
Who was the second? I didn't get it.
Adrian.
Thank you.
Thank you, one and all.